Oh my God.
Do we have the public on the call? Yes.
Wait a few.
Two hundred and seventy.
Yeah, I have an email. Somebody said that link isn't working. I'll just tell them to try again.
You know why? Because Matt, we were still in closed session and he can't run two meetings. That's why.
Times are just slow.
That's me, my big computer.
Elizabeth.
The link is the one on the district calendar, right? I got a, just got a couple of emails.
Probably is because it was therein.
Should, they shouldn't confuse tomorrow night with tonight, though.
Daphne, you're on twice.
I don't know who that is. Oh, you know what? Maybe my phone is on because someone had asked me.
We need Dan.
Matt, you can just take the other Daphne Kendall off, correct?
I have no idea.
Can you just?
The leader?
I'll try it, Daphne. Hopefully it's.
Yeah, I don't know what that's from. I only have my computer.
If I remove you, you know, just log back in.
Okay.
It will not be able to reach you in the meeting. Let's just leave it for now.
Well, it's a public meeting, Daphne, so somebody's your spy in your other room.
My husband wants to know what's going to happen.
Someone is indicating that they're all muted. Okay. Is that right, Matt? They should be.
Correct.
Yes.
So we're waiting for Dan. Brian's here.
Peter?
Peter's not joining.
Okay.
Who else is missing? Susan? Am I counting wrong?
Matt, do you see the note that there's a, the link on the Facebook page leads to the wrong address?
I don't post anything on Facebook.
Sorry, Elizabeth, maybe that's.
I can fix that.
Thanks.
I believe the one on the calendar is working.
Something's working because we have three hundred and thirty-three people listening to us. There's Dan. Okay.
Oh, wait. Oh, there's Michelle. Okay.
We have Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good.
Matt, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As you regard on the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046, that sequential adequate notice was given for calling this meeting, was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton packet on the times on August eleventh, two thousand twenty, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Jess Deutsch?
Here.
Betsy Baglia?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz? Afta Kendall?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
So can I just say, so if Matt goes out, should he put someone in charge or is that not needed? Matt's frozen. Please?
Yes, Mike will be in charge.
Okay.
Thank you, Debbie. So the next item is the adoption of the minutes for August eleventh, two thousand twenty. Can I have a motion, please? Well, I can finish.
Is that something?
Distribution list.
Period. Okay. We can hear you now.
Froze. Yeah.
Jess, second. Betsy?
Yep. Well, I just, okay.
Yeah, the board reserved the right to enter. All those in favor?
He's still frozen.
Can we, sorry, we can do, call the roll. Let's, Matt, would you call the roll?
He froze again.
Why don't I finish? The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy twenty-two thirty recording devices requires that we.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch? Finish this board.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
I don't want to speak at the same time.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Requires that we inform those attending virtual Zoom, this virtual Zoom that the proceedings are being recorded. The meeting is not being livestreamed.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is item E one affirmation of HIV case. Can I have a motion? And I think we can dispense with the notes on the sending district because he's not on the call. Brian, second. Michelle?
Great. Can you guys hear me again?
All those, can we hit, call a roll on that one for a vote, please? Yes.
Yeah.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz? Afta Kendall?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
So can I just say, so if Matt goes out, should he put someone in charge or is that not needed?
Yes, Mike will be in charge.
Okay.
Thank you, Debbie. So the next item is the adoption of the minutes for August eleventh, two thousand twenty. Can I have a motion, please? Jess, second. Betsy? All those in favor? Can we, sorry, we can do, call the roll. Let's, Matt, would you call the roll?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is item E one affirmation of HIV case. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Michelle? All those, can we hit, call a roll on that one for a vote, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is F one present report. I just would like to welcome everyone to this meeting. I think this is the largest meeting that we have ever had in my experience on the Board of Education. We're now up to three hundred and sixty-six and it keeps ticking up. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and to taking time to be with us. The board has been meeting on a weekly basis and we're meeting again next week. Given the restart of school and all the issues related to that, there's just been a lot for, for everyone to do. I want to just say tonight, before we hear from Superintendent Galasso, who is who we really want to hear from tonight, that I want to, again, give credit to Superintendent Galasso and his team and the entire team in the district that has been working on this restart challenge. They have spent hundreds of hours over the past eight weeks trying to come up with a solution to bring our children back into school, and this has involved administrators, supervisors, teachers, union representatives, health authorities. You'll hear more about this from Superintendent Galasso, but I just want to, again, express, as I have done the last few weeks, the board's deep, deep gratitude for the time and dedication of that team that is doing this work, and we are very grateful for your dedication to bringing our children back and trying to give our children education in the best way that we can in accordance with all of the applicable safety requirements and in keeping everyone safe and healthy, our students and our staff. So thank you, and I'm just going to turn it right over to Dr. Galasso.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. First, let me, I think Dr. De, De Stepan, Dr. George is on the line along with Jeff Grocer from the, from the Princeton Health Department, and they have been giving us tremendous access to their knowledge and expertise over the last months and even when Superintendent Cochran was here. So we want to thank Dr. George and Jeff and the entire team for all of their assistance. I also want to say a thank you to the administrative team for working nonstop since July one, seven days a week to develop remote learning criteria, putting together a thoughtful plan and for the plan that we're presenting tonight. I also want to thank Elizabeth Carter because Elizabeth has been nonstop communicating with all the parent groups and the various newspapers and media outlets, and I want to thank her for her tire, tireless efforts. So, Matt, if you would kind enough to put up the, the PowerPoint for me, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Give me a second.
Sure. While Matt is putting up the PowerPoint, I wanted to, I want to explain to the public, we're going to talk a little bit about a phase up plan that the administrative team and I have, would be recommending to the board, but in this plan, there are two major contingencies in order for us to implement it, and, oh, thank you, Matt. So can you move to the sec, second slide or can I control this, Matt? No?
If I'm running it, then I.
Okay, alright.
Do you want to try to pull it up yourself in case I do go out?
Well, let's just stay with this. I don't want to hold up the meeting any more than it is. So we'll just go to the four phases. As you may recall, members of the public, the Board of Education approved a calendar change where we front-loaded all of our professional development days. So in other words, our teachers would actually come in on the first of September and we would be doing professional development, making sure that all of our remote learning pieces were in place, making sure that the new learning management system, which is Canvas, all of our staff were properly trained and make sure that they were ready to go, and we anticipated bringing in our pre-K, K, and one students on September fourteenth, along with our autism youngsters, our learning disabled youngsters, and multiple disabled youngsters on the fourteenth. And our plan was to, and you can move it on that one, a couple of slides down to, there we go, great. And our plan was to make sure that all of our protocols could be followed for a two-week period of time. Now, why did we choose those youngsters? Because we believed that little guys who've never been to school would benefit from a face-to-face instruction with their teachers, getting to know them, learning the new devices that the board so graciously is providing them, and allowing our special needs youngsters to interact with the social emotional pieces of our teaching staff. If that went well, if we were able to look at a metrics that said all of our protocols are working well, our HVAC is working, all of our devices are in place, we would then thought about, we would have then on October fifth authorized bringing in our special needs, I'm sorry, our, our two to five youngsters in the elementary schools. If that were the work and the metrics were good, two weeks later, we would have brought in our youngsters from six through twelve. Some of you may say, well, why, why is it taking so, why would it take so long to do this? We wanted to do it well. We wanted to make sure that all of our schools, all the HVAC that I'm going to talk about, upgrades that we put into, that were purchased for our schools was, you know, was installed and properly working. We wanted, we wanted to do it in a way that we could ensure the highest standards for youngster safety and our staff's safety. Please, Matt, excellent, please. Well, let me, would you go back one? I'm sorry. Matt, go down to this, to the next one, please.
Sure.
Okay, great. So if we were bringing our youngsters back, we would then, we're going to use a two cohort, we're going to use two cohorts and a remote learning group in our elementary schools. So students would have come to school Monday and Tuesday. Cohort A, cohort B would be coming to school on, on Thursday and Friday. Wednesday would be a remote day for most of our students, and that is pretty much outlined in, in, on our slide. Matt, one, down one, please. So then I talked about grades two to five, which would begin on October fifth, and I talked about the cohorts being in A and B cohort, and cohort C would attend virtually only. We even thought at one point that we would be able to build a primary virtual school for K to five, where youngsters from four elementary schools would be with a group of teachers, and if we were able to implement our hybrid model, those youngsters would stay in a virtual school for the time that they had, from the time they chose remote learning. Next slide, Mike. Matt, please. Okay. So the phase four would have been the middle school and the high school. Each cohort there, we were using a different model. We're using four days in and six days off, and then flipping the cohorts, and again, cohort C would be attending virtually only. The remote learning would be a combination of both synchronous and asynchronous instruction, depending on the student's schedule, and when appropriately certified teachers were in the classroom. I want to mention something about remote learning. We will put up on the website, it's almost a nineteen-page document of expectations for teachers, expectations for students, expectations for parents in the synchronous and asynchronous learning model. Dr. Ginsburg and his staff put that together. They will be revising that over the next two weeks, and the reason for that, it'll become very clear in the next few minutes when I, when I, during the presentation. Matt, what, the next slide, please? Okay, so this is, this continues with the phase four piece with the middle school and high school. We will attend their assigned cohorts, attending in classroom four days and then six days virtually, as I mentioned. Students in autism and multiple disabled programs will attend the classroom Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays each week, and virtually on Fridays. Matt? Athletics. I met with the athletic coaches today. You know, the community should be proud. You really have an outstanding group of, of coaches that, that serve the students in Princeton. I was very impressed by their professionalism. They're willing to work with our kids. We will make a determination about fall sports and the fall sports schedule by September fourteenth, and there are a number of reasons for that. There are all, already two school districts that have announced that they will not be participating in fall sports, and in conversations that I've had with district superintendents, I'm guessing that there's probably going to be significantly more districts not having fall athletics. Well, we're going to hold off until September fourteenth and look for guidance from the NJSIAA Governor's Office, but we will, and I will be recommending to the board that we employ our head coaches on a, on a part-time basis to provide the social and emotional support for athletes. If we're successful with opening phase four, we will work with our athletics department to develop a new program if we do not have fall sports for each student cohort. Matt, next slide, please. What are the contingencies? And here's where the plan, you're saying, wow, you went through this whole plan and now the contingencies come in, and this is the reason why, the main reason why we cannot put into place our hybrid plan that I just described. We're at a crossroad. We are receiving accommodations from our staff with medical documentation that they are unable to work in person and in a hybrid model. Therefore, we will not be able to staff our schools properly, and I have to recommend to the Board of Education that we go to an all-remote learning scenario until October twelfth. I'm hoping that by October twelfth, there will be enough confidence in the school district's ability to provide the appropriate ventilation, the appropriate PPE, the appropriate cleanliness in our buildings, and confidence in our protocols, that, that we will be able to have our teachers come back to the building. That will depend on, you know, the virus, if it spikes in Mercer County or in New Jersey, or other variables that we're unable to control. But the reality is, is that we would want to bring back our staff on October twelfth. Now, I went through this phase up program because what we can do from a community standpoint is that we can take phases two and three. So in other words, I could take my pre-K, K ones and my elementary kids, if we can return on October twelfth, and they will all return on October twelfth. One week later, on the nineteenth, things go well, we'll bring back our six through twelve students. But again, it all depends on the ability to staff our schools. As of today, we had eighty-nine requests to work from home. These are not all teachers. They are all staff members, but there are a significant number of certified staff members who are requesting to work from home and home accommodations. So we also anticipate another twenty or twenty-five requests to work from home. That leaves us the, to be unable to staff our schools appropriately, and so therefore I have to recommend to the Board of Education that we go to a remote learning style for at least the first month to October twelfth, and hopefully at that point, we can bring our students back. There really isn't any choice for us because we do not have the staff to implement the instructional program. Next slide, please. HVAC and ventilation. The board has approved ninety-eight thousand dollars' worth of ionization filters. They will also be asked to approve probably another fifty thousand dollars of ionization filters for both JP and the high school. Four of our buildings have brand-new Airdales, but we do want to install the ionization filters in all of our schools. So that should be completed. We, you had pretty good confidence that would be completed by the fourteenth, and if not, we could have made some adjustments if we had the staff to, if we had the staff to operate our schools, but we do not. So it will give us time to make sure that all of our schools meet the health and safety standards, the ventilation requirements, and to make sure that they're a hundred percent in working order with the air exchanges that we want. So hopefully by October twelfth, the HVAC will be in place, all of our building renovations are completed, all the Plexiglas and PPE that we've installed and are placing in our schools, all of our protocols, all of our, the nurses' offices and the isolation areas, all of that is in, in a state of readiness, and the, and what we need now is, is for staff to return and feel comfortable returning to our schools by October twelfth. Next one, please. So frequently asked questions, you know, if we do go back to a hybrid and remote learning, can you switch? Will my child have breakfast and lunch? What is Canvas? Will visitors be allowed in schools? Will all students in the hybrid option be required to air mess? What happens if there's a COVID-nineteen case in one of the schools? We're going to provide this, the answers to over the next few slides. Matt? Okay, so we're going to say yes with some limitations. There will be a commitment form sent to all parents soon on which you can select an option. You know, if we go back to the hybrid and remote situation, if a student needs to switch, that will be possible. But if we, if we go from remote to hybrid, students will need to wait at least until after a marking period so we don't have confusion and, you know, and chaos in, in moving students from one learning environment to another. But again, that's only if we go back to a hybrid model. Next slide, Matt. The district will not be serving meals naturally during the remote, but when we do come back to the hybrid, they, you know, will ask children to eat a hearty breakfast at home and bring a lunch or snack to school. Students who qualify for the Meals Benefit Program will have food delivered to them in the same manner that has been delivered since the quarantine began. So that's every Wednesday, and that practice will continue whether hybrid and or remote. Next slide, please. What is Canvas? Well, Canvas is the new learning management system. It's the approved platform for all instruction. So why would you put in your ninety-nine percent of the time? It's, it's a reliable platform because last spring, when you went remote, that platform was probably operational only fifty or sixty percent of the time. So Canvas' operation, you know, its platform, its uptime is above ninety-nine percent, and that's what you want if you're going to have a robust remote program. So Canvas will consolidate all student learning into a single platform, and it will be the launching page for all instructional activities, including Google and Microsoft, which is important because a lot of teachers developed lessons and plans and so forth in different, in different, in different learning management systems. They will be able to consolidate all of them into a single platform, which is Canvas. So Canvas will facilitate self-place learning for middle and high school students. It facilitates teacher questions from all students at all grade levels, including elementary, and training resources will be available on a parent portal. So this Friday, if parents want to log into the parent portal, you will be able to do some of the tutorials regarding how to navigate Canvas this Friday afternoon. So please take advantage of that. Canvas will be paired with district device issued to each, to each student, and remember, we're going to be doing iPads for kindergarten through first grade, Chromebooks for grades two to five, and Mac Air for grades six through twelve. Good news is, is that we received an email the other day indicating that the, all the Mac purchases should be in district by the first or second of September and ready for distribution to our students. In addition to that, I want to make, mention that one of the other issues with remote learning last year was connectivity. We've been able to submit two grants, and in fact, I'm going to be speaking to a funder tomorrow afternoon. We submitted two grants. One grant is to help us with paying, paying for students to have internet connectivity in their homes. Comcast, in partnership with Comcast, we're hoping to have connectivity for an additional two hundred homes. The cost of that to be paid for, hopefully, by a funder. In addition to that, we know there's going to be some homes that are going to be unable to have Comcast connectivity. So we're also asking for seventy-five unlimited hotspots to be funded. Now, we also know the childcare is an issue. So to that end, and to support the remote learning, the second grant that I submitted yesterday was for a hundred scholarships to the YMCA, which is the approved provider of before and after care for the Board of Education, and in addition to that, thirty scholarships to the YWCA, which handles all of our preschool youngsters. So we're trying to assist parents who need it through, we're trying to assist parents with some, some financial considerations with regard to childcare, but more, just as important, having youngsters have the ability to have a good device, a new device, and have that device be connected twenty-four hours a day would be very beneficial for, to, to assist students in learning. And while I'm at it, let me make one point. The Board of Education, I've only been with them for six weeks, and we've asked them to consider many, many purchases and upgrades to the schools over that six weeks, and I think the public ought to know that there has not been a request. There has not been a request. That has been uh not approved by this Board of Education with regards to. Uh, anything that has to do with student instruction. Uh, health and safety. And uh upgrades for our teaching staff. And and or supervisory staff. So, you know, sometimes I think uh. We make a presentation and it's not just the administration. It takes a team of 10 uh to uh assist us in getting the. Materials that we need in order to provide uh for our youngsters. So I I just didn't want to let this presentation go by without me saying thank you. On behalf of all the administrators and especially for those kids that are going to have brand new devices, a brand new learning platform. And connectivity, I think it's going to make a world of difference in the instructional uh practice this fall. Next slide, please, Matt. So. Will visitors be allowed in schools if we get back to school? Uh, you know, and some of you have visited Valley Road. And you know, the protocol is going to be uh everyone wears masks or someone who greets you says hello. Uh, in a pleasant manner, and then we take your temperature. Uh, we do a pre-screening. And then uh, there's a there's a hand washing. That will be very similar to what we do in all of our schools when we get back to our hybrid model. Next slide, please, Matt. Did I lose Matt? Matt?
He may he may need a hotspot.
Did we disconnect that? Oh, boy. Well, I'm going to bring it up on my machine and I'll be able to uh. I have it up and I'm just going to, I'm not going to be able to share it uh with the public because. Uh, I don't have that ability from here because I'm not.
Come back, let me try bringing back.
Oh, you're back.
It's back.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you see it, Barry?
Uh, yeah, let me just get out of what I'm. That's okay. Well, all students in the hybrid option were masked. Yes, we're when while physically at school, students and staff will maintain physical distancing. All will wear face masks unless they're medically or behavior or behaviorally contraind indicated. Uh, so we, you know, um, all of our medical people have indicated as important as HVAC is. Uh, as important as important as the PPE is, the physical distancing and the uh CDC recommendations regarding. Hand sanitizing cleanliness of buildings, hand washing stations. Uh, temperature taking and all of the precautions that are recommended are really uh. Uh, part of, you know, uh making sure this virus does not is contained and not spreading. And that. And what happens if there's a COVID case? Well. Uh, Princeton Health Department is going to be notified immediately and we will provide the contact information for both students and or staff members. And for close contacts, our nurses have been trained in contact tracing. Uh, in fact, they have a significant amount of experience, some of them do, because they have been working with the Princeton Health Department since last March. In helping them contact trace when the uh, when the pandemic first began. So school nurse and principal work in collaboration with the department and the school physician. And be in communication with me to determine the extent of the quarantine or closure and then we will notify, we will, the school community will be notified. And that. So. What happens if the COVID case occurs? Well, we talk about the Health Department and the event of the outbreak of two or more confirmed cases among school or staff where the onset's in a 14 day period. Uh, these would be cases that do not share the household and are not identified as close contacts in another setting. The district will follow guidance for school closure. From both the Health Department and the New Jersey Department of Health. Um, as per the guidance, Department of Health decisions will be will will be informed by a number of cases, the risk factors related. Community spread and community transmission at the time of the outbreak. And the last slide, I believe, Matt.
That's the last one I have here.
Okay, then then one one was off of your thing. Well. So let me let me just recap for the for the public and I hope uh. I I was able to communicate to you that our initial intention. Was to start off in a hybrid. Remote model. That uh was very uh deliberative. Because we wanted to keep the health and safety of our students. Uh, as uh the primary factors. When we got to the contingencies. And we always knew that the number of staff that were going to be asking for accommodations and providing medical documentation. Would be a tipping point. When we first made our presentation to the PTOC in September 14th or 15th, I'm sorry, in July 14th or on July 14th or 15th. We mentioned these data points. And right now, we now know that we will not have. The appropriate certified staff. To open school. In a from a safety and health standpoint. Uh, on September 14th. And that the recommendation will have to be a remote learning environment until at least October 12. Where we can reassess and hopefully. Uh, have the ability to bring back our staff. And uh have them implement the phased in. Hybrid model that was described in the beginning of the uh. Uh, of the presentation. Uh, I know it's a disappointment. Uh, it's a disappointment to a lot of people. Uh, I know a number of residents, we probably had 500 emails sent to us. Very thoughtful emails by the public. Some suggesting that we should be all remote, some suggesting hybrids, some suggesting full time. But all very respectful and all very thoughtful. And I want you to know that all of them. Were read with uh. With interest and a number of the recommendations that you all made were put into the phase up plan. And into the remote learning model. We heard from parents that they were not satisfied with the. Remote learning last spring, but realize. How difficult it was for teaching staff to turn on a dime and move from live instruction to remote. Our plan this year is that the the remote learning will be challenging and and expectations and standards for both teachers. And students. And support from parents uh to make this as uh as close to normal as possible. Uh, but I know that a number of you are going to be disappointed. But the reality is. Is that there's little choice in the recommendation that I have to make to the board. So I'll stop there and I'm maybe board members will have questions and if not, I'm sure the public probably has some comments.
Barry, just to just to clarify for the public, um, you had mentioned consolidating the phases. So October 12th, if you could just uh repeat, who will enter and October 19th, who will enter?
If we were able to return on October 12th, if we had enough staff to to implement our hybrid program. I would bring in our pre K K one, our special needs youngsters and. Uh, grades one through five on the 12th, we would condense the phase two and three. A week later. We would then bring in our youngsters from grade six to 12. Now, I I and thank you, Betsy, for for asking that question because I wanted to be, I want I wanted to uh say one thing with regard to. Youngsters and meeting their teachers. I met with the Teachers Union this afternoon. And I want to report to the public that. Uh, we're going to do everything we can administratively to set up. Opportunities for our youngsters to meet their teachers. Outside. In physically distance. Uh, areas throughout our schools. So that teachers can say hello with one or two kids at a time. And help kids navigate and use their new device. And uh have an in-person welcome. We're going to do that. Pre K through 12 as as much as we can possibly organize. Uh, you know, there will be some teachers who will not be able to come in person. We recognize that, but there will be others. Uh, who who have expressed the willingness to do that and actually want to do that. So we will provide the opportunities uh for that to occur.
I just want to, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle, you're on.
Yeah, now I'm unmuted. My question is just for for clarity is if we pursue the phase. Um, reentry, the way that it's proposed. What are the older children doing when the initial phases? Are being implemented? So if I have a sixth grader, um, and phase phase one and two are for the younger kids. Are they fully remote for that time period until they're transitioned in back into the schools?
Yes, exactly. Uh, if you're not in school and and in a hybrid model or not in one of the phases, then you're totally remote for that period of time.
Dr. Glossa, where will you post the presentation you just made? How will that be made public?
It'll be on the website and I'm not sure if Elizabeth is still with us or not, but I believe it's I I believe it's on the website now.
I have a question. So are the kids are all, if everything works to plan, are all kids going to go to school on October 19? Or, yes, okay.
Yes.
So I just want to share that as a parent um of a rising eighth grader and a rising eleventh grader, I'm extremely disappointed that we can't um. Have in-person learning. However. As a human being, I also understand that the health concerns in the middle of this pandemic. Are very real. And so I applaud your efforts and the administration's efforts to try and get a handle around this. Um. But I think, you know, these are unprecedented times and sorry to use that phrase. And um, we just have to make the best of it. And so um, I know we've talked about remote learning. And I don't know if you want to talk about it more, Dr. Glossa, but you assured us that it will be a robust um education for our students in the fall.
It it has to be because um you're we're not sure how long the remote is going to last. And whether or not uh there's going to be a spike in the virus which would cause all school districts to go back to remote. So since day one, we have focused on strengthening the remote learning. Uh, not only from a pedagogic pedagogical standpoint, but from a device and connectivity standpoint. And also from an equity standpoint.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Yeah, um, so one of my questions was, um, I'm sorry. How like online, how will the music and PE kind of work? I I know a lot of parents have questions on that.
Yeah, and Bob, Bob's on the call. I'm going to let him respond to the music and PE because he's he'd been working with that particular group. So Bob, would you mind responding?
Sure, uh, PE will probably be, if we were in school, PE was going to be outside as much as possible. The PE teachers will be developing uh videos or doing live exercises and movement activities uh with the youngsters. Uh, remotely and music was always going to be a challenge because. Uh, scientifically, when when a singing, you're. You're you're uh, more droplets are coming out, let's put it that way. Um, one of the things that worked really well last spring was actually the. Uh, remote schooling was for the instrumental music lessons. Um, and those will continue. The one problem there is for children who are starting musical instruments and we're working on that because they've not yet. Had direct instruction in that. That that's one of the problems we have to work out for the instrumental music kids for vocal music. Um, again, Pat Lenahan, who was the supervisor of music and his teachers are working on. Ways that the kids can get engaged directly. Um, and in continuing the music program, um, art. I know we received a bunch of uh COVID. Art supplies today from the art teachers for things that we would uh materials that we'd buy that we would try to distribute to the kids at home so they can work on. On projects at home as well. So all those things are in process right now.
I had, can I ask one other question? Um, we have talked a lot about Canvas and we've talked about this is, you know, our platform and everything. And we also talked about parents learning. And I know you said parents can log on on the 21st or is. Is that the P is the Princeton University assisting parents? And I'm. Curious how that's going, if it is going yet.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been done. We do have a number of Princeton University students who will be. Uh, able to be assigned to uh some of our students and since they are familiar with Canvas. Uh, since Princeton University uses Canvas. Uh, the uh, the thought is that they would be able to assist parents also in helping uh navigate. Uh, uh, you know, the learning platform. So uh, they have not been assigned yet. That's now the phase we'll be working on because now we're we we absolutely know what we're doing. We're doing remote learning. We're going to identify those kids and put the student tutors that are available. Uh, together with parents and youngsters.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Dr. Glossa, I think there's some questions in the chat. So again, just to clarify, you're suggesting that school starts September 14th for all of our students. It will be a remote program for all students. Um, the question is, um, will students who are remote, so everyone in the first month, are they assigned to cohorts in that first month? Or are they learning with all of their classmates?
They're going to be learning with all their classmates and then we will then it then when we get to the uh, I know the next question. Is going to be okay on October 19th. Uh, we have close to 40% of our parents right now are saying want to stay on remote. They will be staying on remote. They will be put in a cohort. And then we'll be working out the details with regard to how they would interact with the A or B.
Great, thank you. And we will be sharing with parents what a typical day looks like. Um, and what they can expect regarding synchronous learning, correct?
Correct. Uh, that will be done. And it's also if they were to go on the website and take a look at the full plan. You'll be able to see in the appendix, there'll be uh samples, senior high schedule, sample junior high schedule. And I believe, Bob, there's even a sample elementary schedule. Uh, that's in the appendix of the uh full plan that's on the website.
Yeah, that that actually that plan will be on tomorrow.
Okay.
And Dr. Glossa, do you want to just speak to the plan for the week to give more detail? I guess you have meetings on Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow we will have a parent meeting. Uh, you know, I'll make a briefer presentation and then just answer questions and joining me will be Dr. Ginsburg. Uh, Mika Crisoli, Criselli, who's our special education director, Mike Volpe is our HR director. And Matt Bolden, who's uh, uh, our business administrator, uh, along with uh Krista Galen, who's our technical. Uh, technology director. Uh, they will be joining me for a parent meeting tomorrow evening. And then on, uh, I'm sorry, that's tomorrow evening. Tomorrow afternoon, we're engaging all of our uh employees in a uh. In a in a live Zoom. And then on Thursday evening, we'll be engaging and spending time with our Spanish speaking uh parents. And then on Friday afternoon. We will be doing a targeted uh special education presentation uh with all of our special education supervisors and director. Uh, at at that particular meeting, answering questions about related services and child study team evaluations. And how we're going to provide related services. Uh, you know, uh, we were also working on plans, even though we'll be totally remote. Talking to Mickey today, uh, we'll be we'll be trying to offer some related services in person. Uh, to meet the IEPs of the youngsters. So uh, there's a lot of work to be done. The the work is just begun, actually. Once we make the decision to go remote, uh, the work is just begun because of all the. Contacts that we want to provide for kids and teachers and all of the related services for our special needs youngsters. All of the uh, the work that we need to be able to work with our uh. Spanish-speaking youngsters to make sure that everybody is uh connected and also with with uh. Uh, our student students who uh we're trying to close the achievement gap with. So all that work is now. Uh, our focus for the next three weeks as we begin to open school. And the biggest part of that is the training from September 1 through September 11. With our teaching staff.
Yeah.
Uh, Barry, um. I I guess I.
Barry, I guess I, like a lot of people listening are probably disappointed, but also extremely grateful. Beth mentioned the work that you and the team had done. I think characterized it as hundreds of hours, but I know it's probably in the thousands of hours. And I'm very grateful to you, to the administrators, to the teachers and the staff members who did really everything possible to try to make the hybrid option something that we could do with a particular focus on the youngest kids and on our special ed children who have, who drive the most benefit from being present in the school. So we know very clearly that in-person learning is much better than remote learning. And I know that you and Dr. Ginsburg are, and everybody else is going to work very, very hard to make sure that the remote learning is good as possible. What can you do? What can we do? How can we all work to try to get the students back into our schools in October or as soon as possible?
Well, I think, I think for staff who have medical documentation that they cannot return, that's going to have to be a personal decision on their part. I think what we can do as a board of education and administration is to make sure that every facet of our schools meet the, meet the high standards of CDC, American Pediatrics, and the Princeton Health Department for a, for, for people feeling uncomfortable about coming back to work in this environment, making sure that our protocols, making sure that our hand washing stations are signage, all the things that are necessary to make sure that social distancing and physical distancing occurs are there. And I think then if faculty and staff see that the school district is quite capable of doing these things, and there isn't any increase in the pandemic or the virus in the Princeton or Mercer County area, then I think people will get a second thought. Also, there are other school districts, Hamilton for one, Lawrence for the, another, and three others that emailed me tonight saying they're going remote. They're also looking for an October return. So I, I think the entire county and the entire educational community wants to get back to work. Question becomes, how can we make them feel as comfortable and safe as we possibly can? None of us wants one person to become ill and/or have issues with regard to COVID. So what can we do? We can do what, we can follow our protocols and plans to the fullest extent to make our buildings and our entry back into schools as, as, as well as it can be designed so that people feel comfortable to do their jobs.
Thank you, Michelle.
Barry, yes. My question is, first of all, thank you guys for the phenomenal amount of work that you've done. I think anybody that looks at this material knows that it was seven days a week, 20 hours a day. Amazing, and I really appreciate that. And I'm also inspired by the fact that we have 412 people online watching this meeting. My concern is about the other hundreds of parents and guardians who aren't listening to this meeting. And so I'm wondering, how do we make sure that people get the information that they need in order to get kids up and running, whether it's hybrid or online or whatever the case may be? And Elizabeth does a great job, emails, newspapers. I guess the challenge is, people communicate in so many different ways. How can we make sure, we're never going to get to everybody, but I think that I'd like to have more confidence that we're reaching families from across the board so that we, that nobody gets left behind. That's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. And that's why I think we're setting so many Zoom meetings this week. And we also have our community liaisons reaching out to the community to let them know about these opportunities because I think that's, I think that's critical. You know, it's summertime, a lot of people are not thinking about school and so forth and so on. So it's our job to utilize the community liaisons. We'll also reach out to mayor and council over the next couple of days. We're going to reach out to all the community agencies so that it's a full court press to let people know exactly what we're doing. And hopefully, we'll be able to, to reach as many people as possible. And we really want, we really want to make sure that we have these youngsters ready for that remote learning on day one, which is the 14th. And so there's a lot of work to be done. But in fact, you know, one of the things that I, I've done in the past in other communities that I served, we have 400 and some odd people on tonight. I would, I would ask them to be key communicators for us and tell people about our plan and reach out to their neighbors and reach out to people they see at the, at the various food markets or whatever and say, hey, did you hear about what Princeton's doing? And if they have a question, you know, email us. I found out one thing about the people in Princeton. If you say email me, they do. And so they're not shy and they, and they, and they're very thoughtful. But as I say, let's use the 400 people tonight. Let's use all of our community liaisons. Let's use the 400, 500 people we're going to have on tomorrow and the next night and the next night to try to get that domino achieved.
I'd also like to ask the municipality to see if they might be able to jump in and help us with some of these communications because, you know, we, we can get phone calls. We have robo calls during emergencies, and there's a lot of different ways that we can use communication vehicles. But thank you for all these meetings, and I know our community liaisons do a great job as well. So we just need to reach out to as many people as possible. Thanks a lot, though, for everything.
Thank you.
Susan?
I too wanted to thank you and your whole team for all the work they put in. I know there'll be particular anxiety with incoming sixth graders, incoming ninth graders, especially starting in a remote. I know you've been thinking about it, but can you maybe address a little about how you're going to deal with those students and also students who are new to our district?
Susan, could you just repeat that again? For some reason, I, my machine was catching every other word. Not sure.
I wanted to ask about the incoming sixth graders, incoming ninth graders, students that may be new to our district, how you, you know, one, welcome them, build a sense of community, those kinds of issues in a, in this remote world.
Yeah, we, we were talking to the teachers' union today, and, you know, they believe that they can get enough teachers to come in and do an orientation for our sixth graders at the middle school, PUMS, and also at the, for our ninth graders at the high school. But we would want to provide an opportunity for as many youngsters, whether they be sixth graders, ninth graders, or 10th grader, whatever they happen to be, whatever grade level. If we can have the teachers and staff in and can figure out a way, our building principals can figure out a way to do it in a safe manner and have kids come in and meet their teachers, get their device, have a conversation. I think that's important, especially if we, if we stay on remote for an extended period of time.
Barry, I met with the kindergarten teachers last week, and they themselves proposed, starting on September 14th, if we were going to go remote, that they would all come in and, in a parking lot, across the classroom with one or two kids at a time, greet their kids, spend a little time with them across the room, give them their devices, show them how to log on. So they volunteered before we even asked them that they would do that.
Hey, thank you, Bob. Are you?
Are there other board questions? Dan, are you?
Barry, could you just talk about the teachers and your expectation for whether they be physically present in school, doing remote learning at home, or some kind of explanation thereof?
Yeah, we, our expectation is for, you know, the teachers, now that we're in a remote environment, to fulfill the curriculum requirements. We also want that to be as, as robust as possible. And in my opinion, that is synchronous learning and, you know, and making contact with students on a daily basis. So we will, you know, the schools will hopefully be open, and faculty and staff can feel comfortable coming in and teaching from their own classrooms or they can, some of them who were unable to do that can teach remotely. But the same standards and expectations will be expected from staff, whether they're at our, one of our facilities or whether they're home.
Thank you.
Dr. Glossa, Dr. Ginsburg, maybe you can answer this. There's a question in the chat, and I think it would be good if you explained it. Kids will still be assigned to teachers, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Could you explain that a little more, please?
Go ahead, Bob.
Sure. The class rosters have already been made up in most cases, and the children will be, will be with, now that we're going remote, they will be with their teachers. Had they been in hybrids, we were still going to try to keep them with their teachers, but we needed to be sure that the classes were evenly divided. But the plan is for the, when they start on September 14th, they will be with the teachers they would have had in the elementary school. In the middle and the high school, they'll be going from class, well, from class to class with the teachers they would have had.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just sort of explain what, some of the things that made us come to this conclusion. As an example, if there was a, and I'm just picking something out of the hat, but as an example, it's not necessarily this teacher. But if there were, was, for instance, a, an advanced placement calculus teacher at the high school who, who was unable to come in and wanted to teach remotely, that's not somebody we can easily find a substitute for. So that teacher would have to be the person doing the teaching. It would be silly for us to have that person teaching from home and bringing a whole bunch of high school kids into one classroom to watch that teacher teach on a screen. And we had a whole series of people who had those kinds of responsibilities. So that started the ball rolling. A second issue was that many of the districts around us were announcing over the weekend that they were going to go remote. And I think although we had lots of teachers who were coming in, I think part of it, and this, this is not a put down of anybody, it's just natural human concerns began to wonder, was it really safe or not? And I think people were asking why, I was watching the chat, what do we think will be different in, on October 12th? And Dr. Glossa just mentioned that the schools will remain open. Teachers will be able to come in, teach from their classrooms if they want, have access to their materials. And our hope is that they will start to see also that in fact, what the commitments we've made in terms of the, the schools being clean, having all the PPE in place, having shields in place and all that, will help people to become, to start becoming more comfortable. And so that's one of the things that might change by October 12th. And then also people watch, they've seen on the news down in Georgia where all the high school had to be quarantined because the kids didn't keep remote and all that. I think when, when people realize that if we follow the right rules, things can happen. We may see people willing to come back. So I think that's part of what the districts are looking towards the middle of October, that things may be in place that we can start getting back to school.
Dr. Ginsburg, Dr. Glossa, so I'm noticing on the chat also there's some just basic parent questions saying, when, when will parents know their classroom assignments? When will the children receive the computers? And how will the children then be taught to use Canvas?
So the, the devices will, should be here by the first or second of September. So they'll be distributed prior to the 14th, you know, school. As far as the class assignments, as Dr. Ginsburg has indicated, pretty much they're all made. And Bob, I don't know if there's a plan to disseminate them now that we know we're going totally remote, if there's a time, if there was a date set for that.
You mean for distributing the computers?
No, the class list, Bob. They were talking about class.
Typically, in the elementary schools, the class lesson did not come out until right before Labor Day anyway. So no one, we're not behind, even if it was a normal situation, we wouldn't have distributed them yet. I think the teachers, the principals I know are working on them and have finished them up to the extent they can. But we still have people, as recently as today, registering. So I think they're still putting them in place, and they, I think, were holding back anyway because our intent actually had been to send out our commitment survey this evening in both English and Spanish, having parents. The last survey we sent out at the end of July, not everybody responded, and people had the choice of saying they were leaning, or they were definitely hybrid or remote. This survey was going to have people make a firm commitment as to what they were doing. And then the principals were going to look at that to make sure they had balanced classes and so forth. So we can convey to the, to the principals that even though it's technically earlier than in the past, that people are getting nervous, so maybe we should try to rush that up a little bit. I'll convey that to them tomorrow.
Beth, there was a third thing, a third that you asked?
You're on mute, Beth.
I think the questions are about how the students will learn about the Canvas system.
So the, the, the week of September 8th through 14th, I'm sorry, 8th through 11th, we're doing lots of professional development with the teachers and the teachers. And answer to an earlier question that was in the chat that got away from me before I could answer it, was, is, are things going to be the same from school to school and so forth? And actually, the, the supervisors will be working, for example, with all the fourth grade teachers across, across schools, having the teachers work together to develop initially the plans and the units that they're going to be doing so there will be some standardization amongst that during that week. What we're looking at, and it was just briefly this afternoon with the principals, was taking some of that time to do as I said that the kindergarten teachers volunteer to do. And we're going to look at the others, whether or not we can get people in as we distribute to the kids the, the new devices to at least show them how initially to log into it and get to Canvas. And then I think the first few lessons, the teachers will work with the kids to help the kids understand all the, all the functionality they have with Canvas. So that's, that's, again, in process. We thought part of the reason for trying to go hybrid initially, even if we thought that in flu season we'd have to go all remote later on, was to in fact, get the kids used to how to use Canvas. So we're working on that right now. Literally, the, the decision to go all remote was made within the last day. And so those are new, new conditions we now have to face and get plans in place for.
There are also a number of questions that on October 12th and October 19th, we are planning on a hybrid if we're able to be in school at that time, correct?
Correct. It'll always be a hybrid because we have right now about 38 to 40% of our parents who, who want a to, a full remote option. So it will always have to be a hybrid.
Thank you. And I'd like to just, again, acknowledge and thank you very much for this. I acknowledge as a parent and a board member, the sadness and, and, you know, disappointment that we're feeling. But something you said earlier, Dr. Glossa, now that this decision's been made, we have the opportunity now to think about how to bring some of these wonderful parts of school that happen in person. I speak as a former teacher. I know the magic that's created between teachers and students and, and students with their friends. So we have the opportunity now to be thinking about that, to bring as much of that into our, our reality as we can.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think, you know, I think our faculty, I think the administrative staff are dedicated to making sure that parents are happy with the remote learning experience this year. And as I say, the board has provided the tools. It's now up to us to provide the quality, and that's what we need to do.
There's a question in the chat about how, and it goes with Betsy's question about how, how teachers and kids will relate to each other. And you'll see in the plan that we'll post tomorrow, there's even a schedule for when teachers will interact with kids one-on-one or in small groups remotely, at the middle school and the high school as well, on a regular basis so that kids can reach out to their teachers and teachers can reach out to their kids. There's actually a formal schedule for that, subject by subject. So you'll see that there also.
Yeah, I actually read the 100 and whatever pages, but you shouldn't just put that on the website because people will get lost. If we could pull out where you wrote remote and like for high school, you wrote like the A day, B day, and it, it really broke out. And then what you just said, Bob, it spoke about the different times. And like in the middle school, we'll have the when, is that what they call it?
Yes.
So I think if you could take just those sections out and put them somewhere because people won't, it's really hard to find it because.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll post, it's not 100 pages, it's 19 pages. You're thinking of the other one.
The other one that had, okay.
Okay, so what we'll do, thanks for the suggestion. What we'll do is we'll post the whole plan for those who want to read it. And then maybe what we'll do is post parts of plans, like this is what, just the part that would be for elementary, the part for middle school, part of high school, so people can go just to the one they may want to see.
Right, I think that would be very helpful for a lot of the questions.
Give us an extra day to put that together.
Okay.
To be sure that we're going to be updating that remote learning plan, right? So, okay, so, so the public's aware that's not the final document.
Right. Any, all the documents, as you've seen, there was a, there was a question early, really early in the chat about how come everything's changing? And everything's changing because everything's changing.
Yeah. It, it seems like we should have a spot on the web. It, it seems like we should have a spot on the website that it's just going to be where people go to and it's going to keep changing. And it would be very helpful whenever things change to put dates on to show that things have been updated so people will know.
Yeah, you know, and maybe, maybe what we can do, and I got to ask Elizabeth and our communications people, if we could start highlighting our changes in different colors. This way, when they go on, when, when parents go on or staff go on, they'll be able to quickly identify because it does take time to go through the document and try to figure out exactly what's changed. So if we could start making these changes in color, I, I think it would be helpful and maybe we'll choose a color for each week because things are changing weekly. And as I say, you know, this is our plan today. This could change with regard to a governor making an announcement in a week and a half or two weeks, or, or some other event that takes place in New Jersey.
Jess, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, I just want to echo the thanks to Dr. Glasser and the team for all of this. Also add thanks to Jeff Grosser and the, our public health officers. So critical and so grateful for your information. And I also wanted to just, to the extent that we continue to be partnering on the food distribution, maybe there's a way we can do just a brief summary of key information and, and distribute that along with the food as it's going out to the community. And then, Dr. Glasser, if you would just repeat the dates of the, and the times for the parent information sessions, that would be so helpful.
Tomorrow afternoon will be for staff at 1:00. I think it's tomorrow at 6:00 for our parent group. The next evening, the same time for our Spanish-speaking parents. And we're going to simulcast that. And on Friday afternoon at 1:00, it's the special education meeting for, for special needs parents.
And the links to those Zooms will be on our calendar on the website?
Yes, because Elizabeth is taking care of that. So we should, you know, we should be fine with that. So, so tomorrow will be another opportunity for parents to exchange ideas and give us input. And I would say by the end of the week, the administrative team will take a look at all the, the input that we get. And we'll probably be making some final adjustments and, and presenting them to the board next Tuesday night at our, at our August 25th meeting. So that's usually our schedule. We, we present things and then we adjust and revise based on what happens on a daily basis.
The meetings you're having later this week will also likely be recorded, the Q and As?
Correct. So they'll be recorded and parents then can go on at their leisure to, to, to view that as much as they want or as little of it.
Okay. And we might want to do district-wide robocalls about these meetings just because if you really want to.
I, I have to check with Elizabeth. Let me see, her Zoom links are up on the website, except for the special education meeting link, which will be emailed to parents directly. So that one will go directly to the special.
We're sent today, Barry.
I'm sorry, we're sent today?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And maybe the library might be willing to put it on their website as well, so.
I see that Kim, Kim Dorman's watching us, so hopefully she.
I did too, that's what made me think of it.
Now, Barry, do you need us to take action tonight on this?
We, we should approve me informing the executive county superintendent that we are going to go all remote based on health and safety standards and other, other considerations because they're going to ask from. Health and safety is not enough. It's going to require anticipation of HVAC installation too, in order for a reason. So that's the action the board needs to take tonight if you agree with the all remote recommendation because she has to be informed and then informs the governor's office of, of, of our potential plan. She did approve the basic elements of her, I do want the community to know that. I got an email late this afternoon from her. The initial 100-page document that we sent her, she indicated that we had met all the elements of that. But the only element we're not doing now is the hybrid piece, the remote piece. So we have to inform her that we are going to go remote.
I, I would suggest we might do this the way we've done it the past few weeks where we actually listen to the public first and then we do our vote. Does that make sense to people? And again, I guess when we, next, we would then go on to our public comment, but I would note that we'd still have 366 people on here and there's a lot of very specific questions. And again, it would be helpful if those can be held perhaps till, till tomorrow or to the appropriate night when we have a larger Q and A. Although if there's things that Dr. Glasser can address tonight, I guess we can continue to do so. So, Mr. Bolden, do you want to, can you, are you able to do the public comment?
Yeah, Lori Weir.
And I just say, we ask in our public comment, for those who are not familiar with it, we ask that you give your name and address and that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. We obviously have many people probably who would like to speak, so try to be respectful. And we normally do not answer, we do not engage in a Q and A in our public comment session. But tonight, if, if Dr. Glasser wishes to add some clarification, he, he will just jump in and do so.
Hey Lori, you're, you're up if you're still there. Can you hear us, Lori? She says it isn't working. I can read your question if you would like, or your statement, or.
Is she unmuted?
Yeah, she had an older version and told me to promote her to panelist. So she's a frequent contributor, so I promoted her to panelist. Trusted. So I guess. She's probably having technical difficulties like I am tonight.
Maybe come back, Lori, and.
Anyone else, raise their hands if you'd like to ask a question, make a comment, not really ask a question, it's not a Q and A session. Deborah Demeglio.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Deborah Demeglio. My son Luca is at Riverside in the autism self-contained classroom. My obvious concern specific to my son is that he's been unable to learn through Zoom. He hasn't been able to get his OT, speech, PT as much as an effort that they've been trying. My son is unable to learn that way. So please, can someone address the parents with very special kids like mine that this remote has, I love for it to have worked, it's not working. And I'm very concerned not only about his well-being, but about behavioral issues that are very specific to autism. Can someone please address that? Concern.
Let me, let me, let me try to address that. Let me just say that Mrs. Demeglio, we will be having all of our special education supervisors and director address that question to you and the group on Friday. But we recognized, and one of the reasons why we wanted to open up with our hybrid plan, which, which would have brought in our autistic kids and, and our multiply disabled youngsters and our learning disabled youngsters, because we recognize that remote learning is not ideal for any of these youngsters. But at the moment, we have no other option but to work with you and your son individually. And Mickey and her staff can design something for him and others like your son who this remote learning is not working. Specifically, I think it's going to take a private conversation between you and the supervisor of Riverside and/or the director of our special education program to design something for Luca that will be helpful in the short term. And hopefully we'll be back in person in, on October 12th. I know that doesn't answer your question, but in this forum is the best I can do regarding a specific youngster and their particular challenges and needs.
Okay.
Matt, are you with us? Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Beth, I don't see anyone else up with their hand.
Okay. Okay, if there are no further questions, really, no one's asking questions. Well, maybe people are saving them for tomorrow. And again, if they're emailed to us, and that's also helpful.
There are tons in the chat. So I'm wondering if, can we hang on to those questions and then maybe develop that into a FAQ? I know that's asking a lot, but.
Kurt, Kurt is going to, since we changed the recording, so we had suggestions from the public, if I record on the cloud, but it doesn't save the chat, but Kurt is saving all the chat questions.
That's great.
Thank you. There's a lot of good questions.
Excellent, okay.
Uh, Matt, am I?
If you're recording locally, which we decided you would.
No, somebody changed me to cloud recording.
Um, well, can I ask if one of the board members would mind? I mean, we can literally cut and paste the chat.
Can you?
I would think so.
Maybe Kurt.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
I can do it.
Okay, please, because I'm recording to the cloud. It got changed on me automatically.
I'll, I'll do this as well.
Beautiful, thank you.
Board members, copy and paste it if you can, that would be helpful. Oh, there it is, I think that's Lori. I think we've got Lori. In our meeting.
Lori.
Oh, yeah. Why did that just happen?
You've been elevated.
Oh my God, I'm so embarrassed.
We're happy to hear from you.
It went from not functioning at all to now having a meeting on Sunday.
Turn off your video if you want.
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Did you have a comment?
I did, but I, I can wait. I'm so embarrassed.
No, we can hear it now, we're fine.
Up the public shows perfectly.
Okay, I just, I wanted to, I'm a little flustered now. I didn't expect to suddenly appear in the meeting. I just wanted to say that, well, first of all, as always, thank you for all this hard work. It's obviously really difficult. And I'm also incredibly disappointed by this decision. It kind of goes without saying perhaps, but just, yeah. The whole thing kind of makes me draw on my experience at the Fed, which is to make really good decisions is part of it and they have to be data-driven. But communication is a huge piece of it. And I feel like perhaps in some part, some of the teachers that are not comfortable coming in are not comfortable because it hasn't been clearly, you know, communicated to them, the data behind why, in terms of the cases of COVID, it might be an okay, why, why we're ready or why the, why we were presumably ready. And then why the specific measures to mitigate risk are, you know, excellent and how they, to what extent they mitigate risk. And I just think that, you know, even, okay, maybe we are where we are now, but between now and October 12th, it would be really critical that the teachers don't just go in and hopefully go in and hopefully see clean buildings, but actually know that this is transmitted in the air, cleaning the air, you know, whether through ionizers or whatever measures are being taken. That, that's what needs to be communicated clearly. And I feel like there are just, data-driven decisions aren't being communicated clearly and with confidence. And, you know, then people have every right to me, to be afraid. And, and maybe that's where we are. That's just my overarching comment. And, and then I have very, I won't go into it and take up more of this meeting, but concerns about specific things with regard to students because I think the students are being let down. And I'm very much afraid for their education and social and emotional well-being, my kids and lots of other people's kids. But I don't want to take up any more of your time with my specific concerns. And I'll buy the one last thing. If teachers don't want to come back at that point or staff don't want to come back, is there a plan for when you hire new staff that do want to work in our buildings? Last question.
I, I, thank you for your comments, Lori.
Thank you.
But the, you know, you do know that there are tenure laws in New Jersey and teachers do have tenure. So it wouldn't be a question of removing them without a tenure hearing and a long process and expensive one. So they would have to resign in order for us to replace people and hire new teachers who wanted to come in. I think your comment with regard to clear expectations, I think we've been very clear to our staff. And I think the number of people who have asked for accommodations would have asked them, no matter how we would have communicated, because I'm looking at the medical documentation that they're providing, the HR director. And they, they are legitimate. And I'm not sure what we could have or what the Princeton schools could have looked like to make them feel more comfortable than the amount of money and the amount of their effort that the higher staff has put into, into this process. And we've held numerous meetings with union leaderships of all the three unions that are represented in Princeton and also with faculty and staff, talking about building cleanliness, talking about air filtration systems, purchasing the ionization filters, making sure that the Airdales have the appropriate air exchanges, talking to our medical people about proper process and, and, and social distancing and physical distancing and all the CDC recommendations, implemented every single one of them. So I, I think the teachers who have indicated that they can't come in probably wouldn't have come in, no matter what we would have communicated based on the documentation that they've provided.
Can you actually still hear me?
Yeah, we, yeah.
I just wanted to say, I didn't, to clarify for the community, I wasn't saying to fire anybody. I, I wouldn't, I would never say that. I was just wondering, these are very special circumstances. Maybe there's a period where you need people to come in, like subbing, especially you alluded to staff, not just teachers. I just want to be clear, I was not recommending firing anybody.
Oh, yeah. And, and, and as Dr. Ginsberg indicated, Lori, some of the, some of the positions are a little bit more available than others. When you have all the singletons that you have in the junior high school and the high school, those individuals who can't come in are almost impossible to replace because there's a neighboring school district that has 332. I talked to the superintendent this morning. He had 332 teachers in his district who are asking for accommodations. We have close to 100. I'm sure the other school districts surrounding Princeton are similar to us. We're just not going to find 500 or 600 certified staff members to replace these people because teachers are in short supply to begin with. And, you know, we want to hope that the, the quality Princeton staff see their way to coming back after we've taken all the precautions necessary to make these buildings safe. Because we know that 40% of our parents want their kids in school on a daily basis. We know that. And we're trying to accomplish that for you.
So can I just add here that we have about 400 teachers and 100, I guess, less than 100 have indicated that they need accommodations? So 75% of our teachers are prepared to come back. So far. Well, even let's say it goes to 70%, that's significant. So we do have a staff that's committed to our students. However, as I said earlier, you know, these are, we're in a pandemic right now. And hopefully in the spring, it will be better and we'll be able to congregate again. But in the meantime, we, we have to, you know, give our staff, you know, the utmost deference. And even if, even if we didn't, there's a law now that teachers can take 12 weeks of family leave for basically, of, of leave of absence for 12 weeks and they get 2/3 of the pay. And I think, I think that's almost for any reason. So we're just trying to work with our staff here and we appreciate, you know, the struggles everyone's facing. And we hope that we can show that things will get better. I personally have been in the buildings at Valley Road and, you know, it's, the procedure is very safe. And they're taking temperatures, there's hand sanitizer, they're doing contact tracing. So it's very impressive.
Thank you, Daphna. Does anyone else have any comments? I think, I did want to note one factual thing and we have talked years ago about start time at the high school.
There's another question.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think you said you had one more person from the public.
Oh, yes. Julia Dipple.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Dr. Julia Dipple. I had called in a few weeks ago and. I had called in a few weeks ago and talked about PPE for the staff. I just want to say that hearing this news tonight, I'm very disappointed. I can, I hope you can hear me because I'm at work right now. I'm talking to you through two masks, an N95 and a surgical mask. And I can tell the teachers that when all of us came in at the beginning of March, we were all scared to death that we were going to get sick and die. But wearing protective equipment, especially N95 masks, is extremely protective. I was literally swimming in COVID for weeks, and I did not get sick. I had antibodies checked twice. They were negative both times. Numerous fellow staff members did not get sick by wearing protective equipment. It's extremely safe. And it sounds to me like you were doing the proper things with the HVAC and the HEPA filters. I would also like to say, I had a discussion with my husband before I came in and started working in the pandemic, because I was very afraid. And he said to me, and I won't forget this, he said, "How do you want to be remembered through this? Do you want to be someone that stood up and did the right thing and went in and did your job? Or do you want to cower in fear? What is your legacy going to be?" And I didn't ever forget that. And every time I went in, I remembered what he said. And I hope that the teachers that don't come in are not doing it because of fear, that they'll stand up and think of how they want to be remembered during this time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Gloss, I think you've asked us to have a resolution to affirm the reopening plan as of Tuesday, August 18th, and direct you to submit that plan to the county superintendent.
Yes.
Can I have a motion, please?
That's part of the consent agenda. Everything else is on the consent agenda.
Well, thank you, Matt, and I won't, I won't, we don't have to move that separately. It's a consent item. Okay, so that takes us to I-1 on the agenda, the job description for the Director of Professional Development, which is a consent item. If there's any questions, just stop me. I'm going to go through the consents. Then J-1, the emergent purchase above the bid threshold. And this is for the ionization units. Is there any, can I have a motion? Is that, that's a consent item. Do I have a discussion? Brian?
Um, I just wanted to follow up with Matt. I asked a question about pricing and unit costs. I know we're moving very quickly on this. But I was a little confused about why the prices varied from school to school. I believe we're probably ordering one, two, or three different types of devices. I would have expected that we'd have one price for each type of device. But I don't want to overcomplicate things. I'm just curious.
They were slightly different. You're right. They were slightly different. I believe it was related to the installation differences. At each school, there was slight differences, but not very big differences in the unit prices.
Okay.
And just to explain to the public what these are, these are ionization units that would be put into the air handlers. Does anyone want to speak to that, Dr. Gloss? Do you want to just explain that briefly?
Well, I'm going to let Matt do that, since he did the investigation. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's a, it's, I want to say it's new. It's been around for a while. You know, there's been a fair amount of discussion about the, as with these kind of industrial technological studies, there's no quote-unquote peer-based studies. They are being widely implemented in commercial, hospital installations, airports. It's a, called needlepoint bipolar ionization. There are lasting features, so this is not something that's going to benefit the district for this time period. So, you know, Dave did an awful lot of research, not to, you know, one of the benefits of having an engineer on the staff is, and it does take some time to look at the details with this. It's going to hopefully benefit us for the next 10 or 15 years, as long as the individual units work in the Airdales, in the, in the universe. So then, in JP, they will be, can be transferred over into the Airdales.
Matt, you froze.
You froze them again.
Can I ask a question in the meantime, while Matt gets back? When are they going to be installed by?
When?
When?
Being purchased now. Dave says there's a two-week availability. And then, I'm trying to remember the name of the contractor, but they should be installed two weeks after that.
It's mechanical, I'm lying.
Say that again, Matt, I'm sorry.
And are mechanical, and there was a two-week lead time. So we are hoping that they should be in the second week of September. We're still finalizing JP and PHS for the equipment in those schools.
Thank you.
So by October 12th, it'll be all set?
Should be, should be by the 14th in most of, in almost all the schools, but surely by October 12th in everywhere.
So September 14th.
Yes, by the 14th of September, we anticipated those being installed so that we could start our phasing plan. And then by October 12th, when we were bringing the other kids in, all the HVAC would be completed by that point.
Thank you. Okay. I believe that brings us to the consent vote. Can I have a motion, please? Jess, second. Brian, any discussion? If not, Mr. Bolden, can you call the roll, please?
Oh, we lost him. Mike, do it.
Mike, can you call the roll?
Any orders, fine, Mike.
Working on it, yep. Okay, I'll just go on the order on my screen. Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Jessica Deutsch?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Pond?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
Brian.
Sorry, you're hiding there. Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Nine to nine, nine in favor, no opposed.
Yep.
And that brings us to our last section of public comment, although I don't, Matt, are you back?
I am back. Thanks, Mike, for jumping in, making me obsolete. Never. Easy, and thank you very much.
So do we have anyone else who wants to comment on any topic?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised, but please, anyone out there, just raise your hand if you'd like to comment. I don't see anybody.
Okay, if not...
Of course, always happens, one person. Melena.
Hi, actually, this is Jessica Vera. I'm calling and happen to be in the company of Melena, but it's actually Jessica Vera. I see Bob smiling, which is always great. Hi, Bob. I guess the concern, I think you guys have done an amazing job. I just want to start with that. And it's a very difficult place that we find ourselves in. But I would love a rubric. I'd love to have something to measure ourselves against, whether that's cases in the state, whether that's cases in Mercer County, whether that's... I just feel that we are, what prevents us from continuing the same discussion in October? And I would love to just have something in which we say, "Look, 75%," or whatever that number is, "of the teachers want to come back." And 50% of our student body wants to come back, and our cases are still below whatever that threshold is. Having that rubric helps us to make a decision more clearly and not so emotionally. And that's, I leave it to you to determine that rubric. I don't know what the truth of that rubric is. But I think having that rubric helps it to make it less emotional. And I'll just leave that out there. And again, thank you very much, because I think you are all in an incredibly difficult position. And I also think that the amount of work you've done is way above your pay grade.
You're still on. You guys might mute. Thank you. Matt, does anyone else? I see two hands.
Ben Bigioni?
I could even, Jen Bigioni, the librarian at the high school. I just want to address something. You know, there are many of us who are nervous about going back. We're not thrilled that we're going to have to be in full PPE. This is not something we were trained for when we went to teaching college and library school, right? We're not doctors who are used to suiting up for surgery and all of this. So this is a tremendous thing to ask of our teachers. The teachers who are not coming back, the numbers that you have, it's not a question of wanting to or not wanting to. And I really resent that kind of discussion going on. I'm not thrilled about it. I was willing to come in. And I have to say, I was also part of the team that was making these decisions. And I was very impressed with everything the district is doing to ensure the safety for our students and for our teachers. The teachers who are not coming back have documented medical reasons. They are suffering of high blood pressure and diabetes and heart conditions. These are not people who are less professional. They are not people who are just out of fear. They are people with documented conditions. And I think that's something that is getting lost in this conversation that is incredibly unfair. I dealt with so many teachers who were emailing me and calling me and really struggling with these decisions, that they had children who had multiple illnesses, and they could not be exposed to the virus, and what were they going to do? People agonized about giving you the documentation that they had to give you. I have teachers who have diagnosed anxiety disorders, who are waiting to give you that documentation still. So these are people who are suffering in making those choices. And to hear it's the teachers who want to come in, or the teachers who are not afraid to come in. No, these are teachers who have no choice but to not walk into the building. And I think that was just something that got lost in the conversation that was very hurtful, because we are all professional, and we all do want to be with our students, and we all do want to do the best that we can. If there weren't COVID, there wouldn't be a question that we'd be walking into that building in September, rearing to go. And I just, I needed to correct that part of the discussion. Thank you.
Looks like there's a couple more there, Matt.
Matt is not, so I'm gonna, this is Kurt. I'm gonna put up Helen Rose.
Hello.
Yep.
Hi, hi. I'm Helen Rose. I'm at 141 Linden Lane. I have four kids in the public schools. I'm also a pediatrician. And I just want to say that I'm seeing in my office the downside of remote learning, of the isolation. We're seeing a lot more anxiety and depression in kids. We're seeing a lot more obesity. We're seeing kids that aren't learning. And I'm seeing several of these things in my own home. Remote learning was really difficult for each of my children in different ways. So I just had two comments. You know, during this remote learning, I felt that there was real variability in how well the teachers did. And what is the administration going to do to, you know, just make sure that all the teachers are up to standard, number one? Number two, I know, thank you so much, I know everybody's worked so, so hard. But at the same time, I'm wondering if people need to go back to the drawing board and say, "How can we make this work with 75% of our staff?" Because it's, I'm seeing it day-to-day. It's terrible for the students. And they need to be with their teachers. Their teachers are vital, vital, and it's not coming across through remote learning. And, so anyway, and thank you, because I know this is such a difficult situation for everybody. But it's the most difficult for our students. That's my, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Dr. Samuel Wang. Mr. Wang?
Yes, am I audible to everyone?
Yes, you are.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Sam Wong. We live at 283 Nassau Street. And we have a rising eighth grader at the middle school formerly known as John Witherspoon. And my, in addition to being a parent, I'm also a data scientist and a neuroscientist, and I have a specialization in development. So first off, of course, thank you all for all this hard work. And specifically, before I say what I was going to say, I should point out that Barry Galasso has indeed acknowledged the genuine medical problems and the other issues that the staff have to contend with. And so I just wanted to highlight that and appreciate the fact that he has noticed that particular issue. I just wanted to say that I think a lot of these fears are, I'm a data guy, so I'm going to say some nerdy things. That a lot of these fears are qualitative, and they sound really important in words, and they are important. But I think that one way to make these things a little bit more concrete may be to think about them just in terms of things like the following. At current level of COVID rates in New Jersey and in Mercer County, we could expect maybe one or two cases per month with no symptom screening. If we have symptom screening, then I estimate, just based on my knowledge of this subject, which is, you know, from obsessive reading, as we all have been doing, that with symptom testing, one can get that down to about one case slipping in every one or two months. And so I think that kind of thing makes it pretty concrete, and it makes clear that your threshold of two cases in 14 days is actually very well thought out. And I wanted to express appreciation for that. I think that kind of thing might be helpful in helping staff and also parents feel more secure. And I wanted to bring up something that I think might be worth looking into, which is some kind of economical PCR or antigen-based testing. And in particular, I wanted to call everyone's attention to the concept of pooled testing, which, which could be done by homeroom or by some other group. And that could in fact get that rate of, you know, people slipping, kids slipping into school with coronavirus down even further. And the only reason I'm going off about this is that I think that these are factors that you've already thought about. But I think if we say something like, "One undetected case slips in every two months on average", that turns the whole thing a little bit more concrete. And I'm wondering whether that would be helpful in both making parents and also staff feel more secure, because it turns into a known risk that's really quantifiable. Because I think, what I'm hearing is a lot of concern in people's voices and people making public comment. And I think that we need to be clear that this is not, you know, this wave of death approaching us. But that, you know, it's an important concern that we must take care of and must address to protect everyone's health. But it's not, you know, black death and what have you. It's bad, but not apocalyptic. Anyway, I just wanted to put those two cents in, and I appreciate all the work we all have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, are you with us?
I think we have Danielle Rollman.
Yes, Danielle.
Hi, Danielle Rollman, 3 Doran Avenue. I have an elementary school student. And I just want to make a general comment, which is that, you know, I think we're all under pressure right now. And frankly, between our politicians and our media, we've been going crazy for about six years now. So, so to have COVID on top of that is very stressful. I think, you know, the thought that we might find the one solution that's going to work for everyone, or that we're going to, you know, the solution that works best for us is going to work for everyone else, I think in this particular situation is just not, not realistic. We have people with different situations, and we have people with different risk tolerances, as Mr. Wong has just highlighted quite well. And so, you know, I think the teachers are under pressure now. I think the doctors in the hospital who had to walk into death every day because they couldn't treat otherwise have been under pressure for five months. And everything's taking its tolls. So what I would just say is, I applaud the school district for trying to find a set of as simple as possible alternative solutions where we can have some... where we can have some standardization, but some flexibility to allow people to choose what works for their family. And that we all hopefully can, 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 you know, continue to try to survive with our sanity intact through this, through this challenging period and beyond. And, 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 you know, just, just let's ideally look for the good and, and hope that, that we can support each other through this.
Thank you. Anyone?
I do not see anybody else.
I, I just want to, I want to once more acknowledge the complexity of all this and the, you know, express appreciation for everyone here tonight. Everyone is doing their best. We're all doing our best for our kids and our community, and it's, it's complicated, and we're muddling forward in something that none of us have ever experienced. Gratitude to all people for being flexible and thoughtful, and thank you for the comments tonight. And I want to acknowledge that, again, remind people that we're putting this information up on our website, that there will be a public meeting for parents tomorrow night, Dr. Glosso and his team. On Thursday night, a meeting in Spanish, and on Friday, a meeting for the special ed parents. And so there's going to be a lot of communication, there's going to be a lot of questions. And we're going to continue to provide information as best we can, in, in every means that we can come up with and suggestions for them. How we can do that better are welcome. So with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn? Betsy, second. Daphna, all in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.